Candy, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, February twenty-two. This is the Stoughton City Council, and we'll start out with the roll call.
Okay, Takowski.
Here.
Caravella.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hiley.
I haven't seen them yet.
Okay, I'll move on. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Miaskey.
Haven't seen them.
Okay, Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Okay, well, go back to Hiley.
Here.
Perfect. Miaskey.
I will mark him on X or absent. I have Vinagas and Hunt absent and excused at this time, so we have nine Alders present.
All right, thank you. The minutes and reports are in the packet. And we do have a public comment period. The only people signed up to speak, I think, will speak probably during their agenda item. So we'll move on to communications and presentations. And Teresa's here again tonight. She's just gonna give a brief overview of the proposed alcohol policy committee, and then if you have any deeper questions, I think she's gonna stick around and answer them during the discussion portion of it. So I'll turn the floor over to Teresa from the Wellness Coalition.
Thanks, thanks, Tim. I'm Teresa Palet. I am the project coordinator for the Stoughton Wellness Coalition. And Cindy McGlynn is also on tonight representing the board of the Coalition. And yes, we have item fifteen looking at potentially and hopefully a subcommittee of the Public Safety Committee to address more in-depth focus on alcohol policy. And a few issues have come up in the last few years, and a few opportunities have also come to light. And we would like to put together a subcommittee to hopefully alleviate some of the time from the Public Safety Committee in citizen input and recommendations on a number of pieces in terms of alcohol policy for the city. So I will speak to your questions on item fifteen.
All right, thank you for being here. And then Sarah Ebert from the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce is here tonight. And Sarah, you should be able to share your screen, and she's just gonna give us an update of what's going on at the chamber. And then when you're done, you can just stop sharing your screen, and then I'll be able to go back to where we were, and we see your screen.
All right, perfect. Hi, guys. I'm Sarah Ebert. I am the president here at the Stoughton Chamber. This is my, I'm going on my second year. I started, it'll be in March. So I just want to give you a little recap of what we did last year and where we're looking to go this year. This is our 2022 Chamber Board. We had a couple of people go off and a couple of people, obviously, come on. Josh Holt is our new chair. He is Holt Realty. Abby Welsh with State Farm is our vice chair. Deb Hunt with Skollin is treasurer. She's been that for some time. Kathy Aiken at Associated Bank is our new secretary. Tricia Sees from the Virtual Foundry is now our past chair. Shelley Edgington from One Community Bank. Matt Griffey from Kixx Unlimited. Amy Hermes is a new board chair. She's with Stoughton Health. Ron Jake is from Stoughton Trailers. Danielle Thompson is another new board member. She's from Saint Marie Boyle. It's a new law firm in Stoughton. There's our mayor. He has been on our board, also the superintendent. And so when we get a new one or even the interim room, Dr. Algren, she is more than welcome to join us. And then, of course, you know, Callie and myself. So our mission has stayed the same. I think if you recall, last year, I told you in 2019, they, right before I got here, they did a new strategic plan. And it's a strong mission. I don't think it really needs to change. There's a whole lot that can be said underneath that that we can continue to work with. And then, of course, we have our goals. And every year, we just take a look. We've had a retreat this year, and we take a look at these goals. We have it in a stop and go light kind of pattern, like red, we haven't even started, yellow, we're working, green, you know, we've got a pretty good hold on it. So all of these encompassing that we look at, and we really try to hit them and make them, make them have some value. So just as a recap for 2021, we got twenty-two new members. We sold over $28,000 in Chamber Bucks. And I just want to ask the council, are you, is anybody not familiar what Chamber Bucks are? Okay, well, super. It's been around for a long time, and I hope that I've brought some new light on it within the last year, year and a half. I was gonna get into this a little bit later, but we have started these Chamber Bucks promos. It started way back when Stoughton Utilities got a grant, and they partnered up with the chamber, and they said, hey, we'll match up to $50 of every Chamber Bucks that are sold. And that went like hotcakes. So if you bought $50, you got $50 free. And we almost have 100 businesses that participate. I would say 90 that participate in this program. So taking that forward, we didn't have that much money, but I looked for sponsorships and tried to do it two times a year. Pick times that people will be, start to be out and about that we really can encourage them going out into the community and using this money. So last year, we did it right around Sentinel My Time to get people, since the whole goal of Sentinel My, we didn't have all the activities as we normally did. But our drive was not to necessarily have everybody come at one big event or one big place, but just get people out back into our community. The city was, and the different departments within the city sponsored that. And then this late fall on Shop Small Saturday, the Associated Bank and the Chamber, the proceeds that we made from our golf outing this year sponsored the next Chamber Bucks matching promo where we match up to $20. I tried to get $2,500 in sponsorships because that way then we can serve 125 families. The second time around, I didn't get that many. We only had $1,000, but we still, you know, we still matched up to $20. So it's been very successful. I would like our next matching promo to be when the community expo starts. So that is in April, so I'm currently looking for some sponsors for that one. We started a new arise with women in business group. Lisa Fernan with Edward Jones Downtown has started this. It's a small business group. It's a benefit without a charge for our chamber members. They do invite non-chamber members, and there is a small fee, and they can attend a few times. The goal is to become a chamber member, but they have speakers that come in. They've had a book club. They've done some fun events, but they meet once monthly. It's a really, a really neat group. We've had our virtual events, mostly all our meetings and our lunch and learns have been virtual. We had one in-person lunch and learn. And then after that, we had to go back to virtual. And even some of our events in the beginning of last year started out virtual and then a hybrid. So we've really done a lot of great things with that, and I have to give most of that credit to Callie with our events because she just knocked it out of the park last year. Our website, some new things on there. We continued as we did the year before, have a list of COVID-19 resources, grant opportunities, just up-to-date links that people can click on. We also put on our website underneath the Business and Resource tab, a Planning and Development. And actually, the mayor helped, was on this committee, Danielle Thompson, the real estate lawyer that's now on our board, and also a representative from SCORE. We sat down and said, you know, because people will come in and say, I want to start a business in Stoughton. How do I do that? Well, I don't really know. I mean, that's not my expertise, all the little ins and outs. And I'd say, go talk to the city. And depending on who was at the city, they may say, go talk to the chamber. So we said, let's get it together in one spot. So I highly recommend, if you go to the chamber website, under that Business Resource, we have some different categories, like permits and zoning and maps. And what were some of the other ones? There's just a lot of different categories we can click on. There's a link right to the city. There's a link right to visitor Stoughton. What does Stoughton have to offer? So it's kind of a one-stop shop. And if anybody ever looks at that and has any questions or any comments on how to improve that, please let me know. We also developed a job board this year. It just started going live within the last month, month and a half. We've always had a job board on our website that lists job after job after job, and sometimes it gets so overwhelming. So we took more of, or took more of approach of categories. So for example, if you had a flag outside your business or a sign to try to get people to come in, what would that look like? Like flexible hours or on-the-job training? So we have an area on our website that has them looking as benefits. And then the company's logo's there. You click on it, and it takes them right there to your, their jobs board. Being a partnership with the paper, if you've looked at the hub online at the bottom, they have, they've given us a little ad that will link you right to this job board. So that, that's something new that we've done this year. Our events, I've already hit on some of this. Our community expo last year was virtual. It did a hybrid of trying to get people to do scavenger hunts and get them into the businesses that participated. Sentinel My, I thought, was awesome. We did as much as we could. Callie really did a lot of pre-taping things of events that we couldn't hold in person. But then also, we had a nice amount of getting downtown and being with food stands and just the camaraderie. I thought it really turned out well. Our golf outing was in person. The coffee break was in person. Wine walk and the children's business fair also we got to do in person, and then Shop Small Saturday. Really not our event, but we do set up a table and hand out some swag in front of City Hall. And just, you know, say hi. It was a nice, it was nice weather this year, so it wasn't bad at all sitting out there. Community partnerships from last year, we started, the planning, Callie actually was a representative of 175-year celebration. I think you probably, guys, are all aware that this year is 175 years, and there's some things throughout this year that have been planned. If you want to see more, hear more about it, you go to Visitor Services and under Celebrate Stoughton. One of the really cool things, and you'll be, if you had, I think Callie's already told you guys about this, but they're starting a walking tour. And then the money that is raised, hopefully during this year, will go more towards a historical walking tour, more permit signage. But there's a walking tour, and you scan a QR code, and then you get the information about where you're in front of. So I think that's a really fun idea for Stoughton, since we have so many great spots to stop in. The Main Street Bounce Back Grants, I did a lot of letters for chamber and non-chamber members that were applying for those. The hospital, the school, and myself have, and the city have created this group that we meet every other week. Still, we still have been doing that throughout COVID, and now, and now we're joining the mayor for Coffee with the Mayor. So myself, Dan DeGroot, and I am not sure who's gonna come for the school, but we will be having Coffee with the Mayor on Friday. I've been talking, when the downtown merchants came along and is working on this association that you guys are familiar with, we definitely did meet. I wanted to make sure they understood what the chamber did. I want to understand what they wanted to do. I'll continue to work with them because I do feel that it is important for some kind of group, whether it's, however this group forms, that we support each other, and it doesn't look like we're the same thing, but represent, you know, that we're trying to do the same thing. I want to make it, I want to be there to help it. Our downtown is really starting to thrive, and it's fun, and I want to make sure it's supported. So I continue talks with them. And then also, the 2022, well, the 2021, and then now also coming out, the 2022 Stoughton Chamber of Commerce Community Guide. I'm starting to work on that. That's coming out this coming year, March. And I would highly recommend you guys, you've all seen it, comes out every year, comes in the mail. They mail it to everybody in our zip code. And it's just a list of, well, it's not just, but it's lists all the chamber businesses. There's ads in there. But really take a look at it and hold on to it because it's a great comprehensive piece of what Stoughton has to offer. So even when you're dealing with your people that you represent, or they're calling you or want to know stuff, that's, just have it handy because you can open up, Callie has a whole list, a calendar of events in there. There is, you know, our businesses are broken up by categories, very easy to find. There's a map in there. It's, you know, there's a piece about from the hospital and the city and the chamber, you know, representing what is Stoughton. So our businesses do hand this out, you know, goes in the Realtor packets. It goes in recruiting packets. So it's, it's a nice thing to, to hang on to. I've seen it for years, and I've always thrown it away and not paid much attention to it because it's like, oh, I live in Stoughton. I know all that. And really, it's, it's worth taking a look at. So going into 2022, we're gonna continue now to, all our events are planned in traditional form. We have no reason to think that we're not gonna be able to do it that way. And then we can take all those virtual opportunities that we had, especially for our chamber members, for the networking, the educational pieces, to get it back out in person. Leadership Stoughton Class will be starting this fall. This, again, the Chamber Bucks matching promo, as I told you, will be starting again. And then we're just gonna, within the chamber, kind of take a look at not the visitor side or their social media presence, but more of the chambers' social media presence. So that was a lot of information. Do I have, does anybody have any questions about that? Or anything you want to bring up about, you know, what are we working on or things that you wish that we would be working on? I would love to hear.
I have a question. Sarah, on the chamber, do you also work with the school district to promote the the greatness of our schools, or at least link them to the school information?
Yeah, I'm really trying to do that. It's a good question. That's, again, forming this alliance with the city, the school, the hospital, and the chamber. It seems like if we all know what's going on at least a little bit in all one of those worlds, we can relay that information because it's so, it's, it's amazing how often you start talking about one thing, and you get to this thing. And those are really big areas. Like I said, we, we started this all out in COVID. We've done these meetings. You know, it was weekly, and then now it's every other week. This is another reason why we're doing Coffee with the Mayor. We're all, they're all chamber members. So yes, is, however they would like support from us, they, they can use the chamber resources. However, they've talked at Lunch and Learns. If they have any press releases or things like that, we throw that out on our website. But I do want the community to look at, at us like together, that we're working together, and we at least have an idea of what's going on.
That's great. Thanks. I like that philosophy. So it'd be a nice, thank you.
Yeah.
One other thing that the chamber has done that wasn't on the list, Sarah, was the fireworks.
Oh. It is. We're starting to think of hot weather in this cold weather. So we've partnered up with, and it worked out really slick last year because it turned out that the fourth, or the fair fireworks fell on the Fourth of July. So we could do a nice partnership between the city, the chamber, and the, the fair. And all get together and sponsor and get a nice little chunk of change. And I think it was a great show this past year, and we'd like to do that again this year.
And I think that is the plan. The fourth lands on a Monday this year, and I just received the proposal. So we'll be talking, Sarah. The chamber and the city and the fair, we split it three ways. So the chamber goes out and works with some of the local businesses for sponsorship. So that'll be something we'll be doing. And then, and that, and also like the Catfish River Fest, the music fest goes on that weekend. And it sounds like we're hoping that we'll, we'll do that this year. So there'll be a lot going on down there. All the personnel, Gaki, has her hand up.
Oh. Congratulations and very much ingratitude for that project of putting together the go-to for businesses to be able to put together. I, I remember when I first got on council and was looking at it. I attended a downtown redevelopment or downtown revitalizing downtown meeting, and they talked about that need. And I'm so glad that that exists, and I look forward to checking that out. Thank you for doing that.
Please do, and please give feedback. It's very, you know, very basic. It's not meant to get into all the nuts and bolts, but it's meant to get to the resource like all in one spot. We looked at a lot of other chambers that have that, and since we don't really have that kind of department in the city, you know, redevelopment sort of, you know, resource, we just are all gonna pull together and try to come up with what we can.
All right, any other questions for Sarah? And, you know, I just personally want to thank Sarah for the work that her and Callie have been doing. Really embrace the new role, embrace the strategic plan. Sometimes when, when you go through that process, it's really hard to initiate and implement those ideas. And Sarah and Callie have been great about doing that. And I think that the fact that we have 22 members really shows that it's working.
I'm really impressed with our new business owners, young business owners, how they've reached out. Like within the last couple of months, I've had so many, I mean, I've had like three or four, one of the brand-new business owners. And they're young, and I just, I think that's wonderful because you don't necessarily think as a chamber is some young, like, I gotta jump on it right away type of thing, and they are. So we gotta, we gotta make the chamber live up to that, that expectation. So I'm really hoping that continues.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yep.
Okay, I'll get back to the agenda here. And the, let's see. There we are. The consent agenda would be the next item. And we have minutes, and we have liquor licenses in there. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson. Was there a second?
Second.
Who's that? Schumacher?
Yep, yep.
Okay, second by Schumacher. Would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? That motion carries. All right, it looks like the next three ordinances are all second readings, and they're all coming from the Public Safety Committee, which would be Alder Person Johnson. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance one of 2022, repealing and recreating section 10-311 through 10-319 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Chapter 10, relating to minimum maintenance standards and outdoor storage. It's the second reading, and the safety, Public Safety Committee recommends approval on a seven-zero vote. I think if Rodney is with us, he could probably give us a further explanation. There's a good explanation in the packet on it as to what it's doing. Rather lengthy one, but a good explanation nonetheless.
All right. And did you make a motion? I'm sorry, I got distracted.
Yeah, I, I did make the motion. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, second by?
Give it to Gina first.
Okay, second by President Hirsch. And anything you want to add, Director Shill?
Certainly available to answer questions, as we mentioned at the last reading. This really is an effort to try to reinforce our arsenal when we're looking at minimum maintenance issues and specifically outdoor storage and addressing them as a public nuisance.
Anything from Attorney Dragby on this one?
Yeah, I guess what, what I would say is that we've been in the process of reviewing both Chapter 10, Chapter 58, and parts of Chapter 78 to make sure that they are giving us appropriate tools to respond to challenging conditions that we find on some properties in the city. In some cases, it's outdoor storage. In some cases, it's dilapidated buildings. In some casing, it's cases, it's a zoning violation. In some case, you know, and there are other examples. And so I've been working on both chap, on, on those three parts of the ordinances to try and make changes that I think are necessary to, to get us to a, to a better place from both clarity in terms of what the requirements are and enforcement tools that are workable. So this is just one piece of that. This is that Chapter 10. I think the, the changes are not dramatic, but are, are really made, we deleted some things that don't make sense in there in this chapter. The property maintenance elements of this have just been cleaned up a bit. So again, I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions from council members? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? All right, here's the next one. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's ordinance two of 2022, repealing and recreating section 58-1 through 58-13 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Chapter 58, relating to public nuisance, and recommend approval on a seven-all vote, and I would move for approval.
Second.
I think I heard Alder Person Reeves. Any discussion on this one, Alder Person Johnson?
Yeah, there, well, as Matt said, this is one of the things that he's been working on. This is Chapter 58. So it's tightening up the, well, tightening it up, making it more, more usable, more enforceable.
Yeah, this, this is Matt. I'll just say a couple of things. You know, you, you will see in this section 58-2, right on the screen now, that one of the things that we've added here as a, one of the defined public nuisances is a violation of 10-18. 10-318 involves outdoor storage that is unlawful under the zoning code. And so we're identifying that as a public nuisance. It's, it's really the city council that has the, the authority to define things that are a public nuisance and that can be abated as such. Then I just have a question. I don't know if Candy can answer this. I, I did make a, a change to this ordinance that I sent late last week. I'm not sure if what you, we have on the screen includes that last-minute change or, or not. If it doesn't, then I'm gonna ask the council to consider a small change to this. I'm just looking up on my computer what I, what I want to see here. Sorry, I need just a minute.
This should be the latest version that I received.
Yep, one sec. I'm gonna look up. Can you scroll down to the summary abatement process or non-summary abatement? There you go. Hold on, keep going. Keep going. Okay, there you go. Yeah, that yellow language is the newest language that, it's been modified to make it clear that someone who's given an order to abate a nuisance has 30 days to seek a court order, restraining the city from taking further action. And that gives the court the ability to determine the reasonableness of the order. And we added that because we think it's legally required for due process purposes. So this, this ordinance with this change is what, at least what I'm recommending the council adopt tonight.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about the ordinance?
Hey, but.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. Here's the next one. Alder Johnson.
Thank you. This is ordinance three of 2022, amending Chapter 70-176 of the City Municipal Code by creating subsection 88 relating to no parking anytime on both sides of Jackson Street from Highway 51 West to the city limits. Recommend approval on a six-all vote, and I would recommend approval.
Second.
So Alder Personal Legaki? So Alder Personal Lagaki?
This time, yes.
Okay, thank you. And anything you want to add? It's fairly self explanatory.
Yep, yep. It is self explanatory. You're just trying to make sure that Jackson Street stays open. It's, it's, there, there is a clause in there that allows for deliveries and so on, but trying to keep it open without public parking on the, on the street.
Anything you want to add, Attorney Dragby?
No, I don't have anything to add on this one.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we're on to new business. And this is our 27 of 2022. This one came through the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravella?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this one is our 27 2022, oh, excuse me, resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, conditionally approving the final plat of the Parker Coal Edition Isham Street Extended, and I so move.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Alder Person Johnson. Alder Person Caravella?
And this is the final plat extension of Isham Street West, going west from Page Street. And this adds six two-family residential lots and one outlot.
Phil, this also contains that trail or designated area for a path, correct?
And at the furthest west of this piece, there is a trail, a trail, trail access point. Yes, there is a, there is a trail corridor component that will be at the furthest west of this piece. Actually, on the illustration here, I guess where, there we go.
Sorry about that.
All the way over there to the, if we're looking at this, it would be to the left or west of Outlet One. Or is it, is it part of Outlet One?
It's actually part of Outlet One. It's a reserved area on Outlet One that's outside of the stormwater management area and would accommodate the trail in that, in that position.
And I couldn't remember, was there any other Parkland dedication or is there just gonna be the fee in lieu of?
This is the only location for this, these six parcels. And recall, the, the discussion on the trail was the expectation when development occurs farther to the west that the trail corridor would then be offset by an additional 25 feet going to the west at that point. There's not a timeframe for that, but certainly that's the expectation going forward.
Yeah, it's just been a couple of months. So I was trying to remember it all. Thank you.
Yep, all fair. You'll recognize there's a number of conditions that are outlined that are customary with our final plat approvals. The development agreement and some of the other standard language is found in this res, in this resolution as well.
All right. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. All right, this next one here, let me pull up is the downtown application permit. And this one came through Public Works. So on this one, we would just be looking for a motion basically to approve the permit. Alder Person Reeves, could you do that?
Sure. So this came about, I believe, when we approved the down, some of the downtown businesses to move some of their dining services outside. With that came some auxiliary lighting in the public right of way and I believe the, the plan with this is just to to actually have a permit so we could regulate some of the auxiliary lighting, make sure it's safe and that sort of thing. Director Shield, do you have anything that I missed on that?
Oh, I think you've captured it. Well, you have Brett, a mayor, Public Works Director, really took the torch with this one and we assisted with some, some observations in this permit as well.
Yep, it's just a create a set of guidelines that we can enforce downtown and when folks choose to, to put lighting in the right of way. And that is just the downtown corridor as well.
So I think what we were looking to do here is we certainly want to allow our downtown business owners to continue to do this. This was kind of started during the beginning of COVID. And we just want to make sure that we have something that's orderly and has continuity. And this kind of outlines, you know, what the expectations would be. And, and I think there's a couple of businesses that are already doing it. So we tried to recognize their needs and, and, you know, communicate with them along the way. And they've been, you know, very cooperative and receptive. So I'm pleased about that. As the weather warms up here, it'll be interesting to see if there's any other businesses that want to take advantage of this.
And if approved, I'll be mailing this out to those businesses, the downtown corridor, so that they're aware of, of this application and permit. And then answer any questions that they may have at that time.
I don't know if you were looking for a motion, but if so, I would move to recommend approval of the permit.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Johnson. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
In section Roman numeral three, number nine, you might want to change remove to removed past tense.
Yeah, I got a, I got a red mark on it already.
Oh, do you?
Thank you, though.
You don't need to, I'm glad.
Well, there's two, there's minor grammatical errors, but I'll make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we can't slip anything past you, can we? I don't know why we try. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right. So the next one is our 28 of 2022. This one we looked at and was approved last night at the Plan Commission unanimously. And I'll have Alder Person Caravella can introduce it and then Kurt's team is on the call. So when we get done introducing it, we can turn it over to your team, Kurt, and you guys can certainly have the screen at that point to do your presentation. And I heard it's going to be very brief. Alder Person Caravella?
Yes, thank you. This is our 28 of 2022 approving a specific implementation plan or SIP for the property at Riverfront Redevelopment Lot One of approved certified survey map, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. And anything you want to touch on, Alder Person Caravella, before we turn it over?
No, I think it, you know, it basically explains itself and more explanation will be on the way.
All right. At this point, I'll stop my screen. And then Kurt, if you want to go ahead and introduce your team and you can have the screen. It's all yours.
Thank you. Tonight I've got our architects, Brian Reed and Doug Hirsch from Potter Lawson and John Thousand from Civil Engineer and Surveyor from O-TI. And then Terrence also from Potter Lawson. And I'm not sure if our landscape architect's on. I can't see if she is or not because I think she's traveling. And we do have just to kind of reiterate everything to everybody. We had a short presentation just to confirm what's in the SIP. And I don't know Doug or Brian or who's going to take that over.
I can do that.
Okay.
And there it is.
All right.
Looks beautiful.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Doug Hirsch with Potter Lawson. And this is your brief presentation of the Riverfront Development SIP. As you probably know, this is the full sort of master plan that we put together, which includes, you know, some green space that's public use as well as a lot of green space for stormwater and public use along the river. The River Trail has been incorporated into the plan. The bridge and the SIP is for the first phase, which is the two buildings here on Fourth Street and at the corner here. See, this kind of shows.
And others, if you're having trouble seeing it, I know at least on my screen, I can drag it over to get a better view of the left of it.
Is it, are the pictures on there?
Yeah, they're just a little.
How's that? Okay. Can I do anything else to?
No, it's fine by me.
You can.
I see it perfectly, yeah.
All right. So this is the SIP, kind of the, the red outline. There is the road will also be a part of it, but that's a public road. So that's outside of the SIP. And that is part of city road system. This is just the basic information for our Phase One Lot One. We have 78 units, 30 units in building one, 48 in unit two or building two. And this is the percentage of unit types down here, which is consistent with the, the SIP. And then the number of parking stalls. This is just a landscape plan. A lot more detail kind of went into this. Some of the discussion at the Plan Commission was we're enlarging some of the terraces in the public right of way to get some larger trees along the street. And these are just some details of the landscaping around the first building. It will have sort of a little outdoor terrace for the, for both buildings for some outdoor use. And then the second building along Wagon Works Way, which is the new road. And the both buildings are connected underground with underground parking. There's 84 stalls below grade. They're kind of connected with sort of what is sort of like a tunnel underground here, but really is just more parking stalls. There's storage underground in the basement. And we have the EV stalls located as well as the future EV stalls. And this is the basic floor plans above grade. As you recall, the first building harkens back to the blacksmith shop. And the idea of building something that kind of harkens back to the history of the site and the industrial nature of the site. But transforms it into an apartment building with mostly red brick and then some gray cement board siding kind of on these upper elements. And a view along Fourth Street. And then a view towards the back of the building between the two buildings. And then the building along Wagon Works Way is a three-story building. It has a lighter brick which relates more to the powerhouse at the corner. And then it has the cement board siding on the upper part of the building. And the main entry kind of along Wagon Works Way. And then as you're around the corner, the site starts, the road starts to slope down. So there's an access point to the garage. And then the backside with the surface lot in the back of the building. So that's the brief presentation. I, we can answer any questions.
I have a quick one, if I could. This is apartments and not condos, right?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have an idea of what they would be renting for?
Oh, that's a question for Kurt.
They'd be running from $1,500 to $2,500 a month.
15 to 25?
Yes.
Okay.
A couple of other things I'll just highlight from last night is the city forester will be determining the trees. That'll be part of the landscape plan. So if there's any questions about that, that's how that's determined. You might have noticed on, on the buildings, there's some signage identifying the buildings. I don't know if, did anybody catch those? So the buildings will have that. That's something I guess, I guess we call that an exception. We normally don't do that, but I think that the picture really, I think it really looks sharp on there. And I think it'll make it easier for people that are passing by to see that. You can kind of see it right below the, right in front of the entrance there.
Yeah, there's sort of freestanding letters on the canopy, which wasn't a part of your sign ordinance.
But otherwise, I think it's safe to say, and Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Plan Commission really supported the, the plan and, you know, we're excited to get started. The reason it's here tonight is we want to make sure that we keep to our timeline. Both parties are working towards closing. And one of the things we needed to do was to get this plan approved so we could meet our commitment for closing. Anything you want to add, Director Shield?
I think I should highlight the, the pleasurable experience. I think we've had the working through this process. The development team, I think, has worked collaboratively with us to formulate a plan. The elected body included in that discussion certainly has shaped this project, I think, well. The, the SIP that's presented tonight is consistent with the GDP. And I think that goes to show that they committed early on to this project and, and put a great deal of effort in having their GDP really well defined. So there wasn't a whole lot of modifications or refinement that needed to be implemented into the SIP process. I, I think this is an exciting project for the community and really look forward to seeing it go vertical.
I second that. It's been great to work with Kurt and your team. I think the architecture is, is beautiful and I thank you for you know, working with us to create this new beautiful neighborhood. So I commend you and, and, and thank you. And thank you Rodney and everybody else at city staff that has worked really hard on getting this stuff done.
Yeah, I'd echo Regina's comments. It's been a long project, many hurdles for us to get through and boy, I'm, I'm excited about this. I'm enthusiastic vote for this one tonight.
Any questions or comments from any of the Alders?
I guess I'd just like to add my thanks. I was impressed to see the bike racks in the underground parking spaces. Just the, the attention to detail, the way people are going to use this building is just tremendous. So thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Kurt and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item. is a resolution to approving the conveyance of certain lands to the redevelopment authority to the city of Stoughton, this one up here. And I'm gonna let Attorney Dragon, you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah, I can do that. So the Riverfront redevelopment area that we've just been talking about, much of that land is currently owned by the redevelopment authority. But some of that land is owned by the city. And as we work towards closing on the sale of part of this land to the developer, we, we've been trying, we've been putting, we put together a plan for how we're going to deal with all the title issues that we have to deal with as part of that process. And so the plan that we've settled on is this resolution is part of that. Essentially, the I'm gonna plug my computer in. It looks like my battery is gonna die on me for a moment. Okay. So this, the city in adopting this resolution will be authorizing the conveyance of all the city owned land within this redevelopment area, the Riverfront redevelopment area to the redevelopment authority. As part of the closing process, the deeds, the deed for the city land would be conveyed to the title company. And the, with instructions to the title company that, that that deed be recorded as part of the closing. And the sequence that we will outline is the city land will be conveyed to the redevelopment authority that those deeds will be recorded first. Then the plat will be recorded, I'm sorry, the C S M, which is now on the screen. The, at the time that the C S M is recorded, the R D A will technically own all of the land within the C S M. With the recording of the plat or of the C S M, you'll see the public right of way will be dedicated to the public by virtue of the recording of the C S M. And then the instructions to the title company will, will indicate that Lot One will need to be conveyed to the developer. And Outlet One will be conveyed to the city. So at the conclusion of the closing of this transaction, developer would own Lot One, Wagon Works Way will be city public right of way. Outlet One will be owned by the city. And lots two and three will be owned by the redevelopment authority. And so this resolution is being presented to you tonight so that you can approve this and we can provide title companies so that title company has clear evidence that the city council is, has authorized this series of conveyances. We also have a resolution for the redevelopment authority to adopt that addresses the same process. So that's it.
All right. Are there any questions so far?
Now, just to be clear, the outlets belong to the city. Lot One belongs to the developer and lots two and three belong to R D A.
Yes, at the conclusion of the closing, that's how all of various land will be titled.
All right. Cause I know like two years ago, we were trying to figure this all out. So I'm glad and thank you, Matt and Rodney and everybody. Cause I know we had many discussions of how we were, whether it was all going to go back to the city or all going to the R D As. So I'm glad we figured that out. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. So we're looking for a motion to, to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So it was a motion by President Hirsch and a second by Alder Caravelo. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion does carry. Thank you. Next item, another resolution. And this one here is coming from, well, it's coming from City Hall. So we're gonna probably need somebody on this one. I'm gonna let I think Rodney start with this one. Do you want to screen? You can have it.
Sure. That'd be great.
All right. I think in front of you, you should be seeing the resolution before you tonight. This resolution takes into consideration intersection improvements that, that are anticipated or required as part of the fifty one West Development at Rutland Town Line Road and U S Highway fifty one. At full buildout, the fifty one West Development was analyzed for traffic impacts. Traffic impact analysis was completed and it was identified that intersection improvements would be required as we, we likely understood. You'll recall, we, we envisioned likely a traffic signal at that intersection. Once the traffic impact analysis was completed, there was actually an analysis, they call it intersection control evaluation. Intersection control evaluation actually evaluates the intersection and movements through the intersection for traffic signalization or a roundabout configuration. The preferred alternative that came out of that assessment that was done by a consultant on behalf of the D O T. Their preferred alternative at this point is for a roundabout to be constructed, a two lane roundabout to be constructed at that intersection. It's kind of interesting or fortunate, if you will, about the timing of this particular intersection improvement. On your screen, I'm sorry, I'm talking and not keeping track of my screen work here. So I apologize. The, the funding mechanism here is actually working in the city's and the development's favor. You'll realize the D O T plans to move through this corridor, make significant upgrades as part of the U S Highway fifty one corridor improvements. In twenty twenty six, they're slated to make improvements to this, this segment of Highway fifty one. As a result of that, this intersection improvement can coincide with that. And the benefit to that is the underlying cost that the D O T would have already had to make to that intersection without signalization and or a roundabout being constructed are being captured by the D O T. If they weren't coming through with this project right now, the development and/or city would be on the hook to essentially fund those signal, signalization and or roundabout options to the tune of two point four million dollars for a roundabout configuration or two point eight million dollars estimated for a round, or a signalization of that intersection based on a trip, trip generation that was projected as a result of the fifty one West Development. So the, the long and the short of that is that because we're benefiting, if you will, because of the timing of their project, the city slash development is only going to be responsible to pay for two hundred thousand dollars for the roundabout concept or four hundred or six hundred thousand dollars if we were to proceed with the signalization of that intersection. It's important for us to identify support for one of these types of intersection controls at this point. Because the design really will be happening very, very quickly. The D O T is already starting to evaluate designs and looking at this corridor for the project that they plan to construct in twenty twenty six. So the resolution before you actually identify support for the preferred alternative, which is the roundabout configuration and acknowledges the city would have to enter into a cost share agreement with the D O T for this portion of it in the roundabout configuration, it would be two hundred thousand dollars. Now, those of you that have, and all of you likely have monitored this fairly closely, but as part of the TIF development discussion for TIF nine associated with the fifty one West, we have been carrying a cost associated with traffic signalization at this intersection to the tune of about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Therefore, that funding that was already identified as an expenditure in the TIF plan would then be utilized to accomplish the, the funding to offset the, the D O T portion of, of the city's portion of the D O T project. And that, that's really what's before you tonight. The, the endorsement, if you will, of the type of intersection control at this location and acknowledgement that the city will have to participate in those costs in twenty twenty six when the actual construction would, would occur. Certainly able to answer questions. The, the documentation in your packet did include the conceptual layouts for the roundabout configuration as well as the signalized intersection consideration. One thing that I think I highlight, I believe in the memo, but it's worth highlighting here is to the northwest or northeast of this intersection and even to the northwest of this intersection, future developments anticipated. So there is still likely additional traffic volume that will be added to this intersection over time. If we chose the traffic signalization option here, it's very likely that there would be additional intersection improvements that would be necessary for accommodating that additional traffic when that development occurs. Longer queuing distances, additional turn lanes or the like might cause the need for additional intersection improvements. Whereas the roundabout, it's less likely to have to undergo alterations handle some additional development traffic that would come as a result of the development to the north. So just wanted to give you that backdrop as well. Certainly the costs, I can get into the costs as we understand them. One of the significant cost differences for, between the signalization and the roundabout option is what's necessary on the west leg of Rutland Town Line Road. In a signalization option, it actually requires them to accommodate queuing lengths and traffic, traffic back much farther. And there are certain grades that are required in order to approach an intersection. You can't have a steep grade. So they actually have to cut back significantly farther west. As you might, most of you likely know, there's a fair amount of grade as you get off of fifty one and continue down Rutland Town, Town Line Road. They would have to be shaved back a considerable distance, much greater than if a roundabout is, is installed in this location. So that's, that's the principal difference, the four hundred thousand dollar separation primarily between the two, the two options. Certainly available to answer questions or try to answer questions and discuss the topic. I hope I captured it fairly clearly at this point, but certainly open the questions. I think I saw somebody in their hand up.
Yeah, there's a couple. Thank you, Rodney. That was a great job explaining that. You can see that, you know, these things aren't really that simple. They're very complicated and to be able to break that down like that is very helpful. I had other person Jensen Legaki and then Hirsch.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my, my comment. It was, it was answered as Rodney went further with his explanation. So.
All right. Alder Crystal Legaki.
Excellent explanation, Rodney. Thank you. I have a comment and then two quick questions, but at least I hope they're quick. You know, this is part of that area that we've been concerned about, that we wrote below the D O T. And I'm so glad this is coalescing. In reading this information and a person who's worked in emergency trauma centers, I really feel that the safest clearly is the roundabout and that is a high value of mine. And so I like to say that I like what this proposal is putting forth. So I'm in favor of that roundabout idea. So Rodney, my two questions are this. One, are you saying that, well, my first question is you're saying two hundred thousand dollars, but in reading the resolution, it says the estimated amount could be two hundred thousand plus possible relocation and, and reallocating the T I D traffic signal expenses. Is it just potentially two hundred thousand is my first question.
Great observation. Great question. The potential relocation costs are, are undetermined. Am I on, I'm sorry, I can't see if I'm speaking. Am I muted? Okay. The relocation costs have not been identified clearly. The state believes that there will not be additional relocation costs in the, in either of these funding options. They highlighted that in the event there would be that we have to understand there may be some exposure there. But they also, you know, we did indicate that two hundred and ninety four thousand dollars would be, you know, reassigned, if you will, in the TIF project plan from the traffic signal language to the roundabout language in, if this resolution was adopted.
Thank you for that answer, Rodney. And it sort of leads, and I think you may have answered it, but in my simple brain, at least I'm trying to be simple in understanding this. Are you saying that we already have two hundred ninety thousand dollars allotted for this through the T I D? Or, and that there's no fiscal impact that we have to approve. You're just asking for our endorsement? Or is there a potential of two hundred thousand plus, how you just explained in the answer to the last question that we could be on the hook for?
Kind of a great, another great question because yes, the TIF project plan, Ted nine already includes an expenditure anticipated of two hundred and ninety four thousand dollars that we would use for this. So we're not, not anticipating additional expense. The issue is the TIF project plan and the TIF district hasn't all been created yet. So we're working in this, you know, kind of arena where we think everything's coming together for this. You know, all indications are we're still moving forward in that direction, but that's where we're at.
So to comment, if, if things go as planned, we, we might not be on the hook for that money, but there's a potential that things could not go forward and we would be willing to say this is that important and this is a value and, and we should earmark this money.
Yeah, recognizing this expenditure actually is not an out of pocket expenditure until twenty twenty six. So essentially it's after construction. So we're identifying, you know, future expenditure. So the real hope is the TIF district is going to come together as, as outlined. The development is going to proceed as expected and the TIF funding would be available for the twenty twenty six expenditure.
Thank you, Roddy, for answering those questions on this great project. Thank you.
President Hirsch?
Sure. I guess to kind of add with that, Rodney, what I think what you're saying with respect to the budget is if we don't have enough increment at that time to offset that two hundred thousand, we might have to borrow and then pay it back as an increment comes in, if I've understood that correctly.
Actually, you're on the right line of thought. What I was referring to more is if the TIF district didn't materialize, then we would have to borrow for it. You know, obviously the TIF document outlines when we plan to make expenditures and when we plan to reimburse the developer for their pieces. And this falls in line with that, assuming that all comes together.
Okay. Thank you. And second, just because I know you know, this question is coming because we talked about it earlier. For people that were really concerned about bike safety, can you go over just for the general audience? I know you already explained it to me about all the safety features that this roundabout would put into place to keep bikes as safe as possible.
Yeah. Thanks for the question. As you know, this corridor, we've identified ten foot sidewalks, if you will, that are, are running parallel to the, the fifty one corridor. The actual crossing as the design comes together in the roundabout, for example, at Hole and Silverado, we're, we're including what we call rapid flash and beacons. You've seen them next to Viking Group Hub and others. Those are going to be introduced in that roundabout for hopefully some additional safety measures. And we anticipate those type of facilities being planned and programmed into this roundabout. Once we have some, even if you will, some experience having them function well here, we'll know that four years from now, when this actually proceeds to construction. If there's other things that we might need to refine, we can probably do that as well. You, you might also recall, this is the design speed for out here has been reduced to thirty five miles an hour. So the state is designing this intersection with a corridor speed. The state is designing this intersection with a corridor speed of thirty five miles an hour. Recognizing right now it's fifty five at this particular location or just transitioning out of forty five, so. You know, that coupled with the speed reductions, you you know, is all promising. At a future meeting in the very near future, we're going to have another discussion with with you and the finance committee and others about. The underpass discussion, we have to figure that out. Pretty quickly as well, and I'll just lay a little background so you have this. The kind of anticipated location for a future underpass would be to the north of this intersection, so between. Rutland Don Town Line Road and County Highway B. The state would need to be taking that into consideration and beginning to design that. Essentially now, because the grades approaching this intersection and that whole corridor will be impacted by an underpass. That anticipated design activity, they're estimating to be their their costs. That would be borne by the city is a price of only sixty thousand dollars. So we have to vet that piece of it out somewhat separately, but very soon, we we just became aware of that. In the last week, so we're trying to figure out how that can be discussed. You know, there's there's other complicating issues we got to figure out and. The the inability to. Use eminent domain for park and pedestrian facility, you know, some of those questions have to be discussed as part of that as well. But I'm just laying the foundation that we're not excluding that conversation that's yet to come. This intersection is is really being designed. In anticipation of that discussion yet to come related into the underpass in the near future.
Now I would just add that, you know, our conversations with the DOT, I think have been really productive. And having the council's support on these resolutions is really valuable when we're having those conversations. Because it really gives, you know, gives clear direction of where we want to go, whether it's a speed limit. Or the design and, you know, I think that really helps us make our case when we're making requests. Such as the flashing lights, the flashing lights is something that I think will be new. I think they said to Wisconsin. They mentioned that they did some research and they found that in Florida. So the fact that they're willing to to do that, I think is is a reflection. On the support that the council and and, you know, working with us. To present to the to the DOT is is really been important through these processes.
Thank you, Rodney, for all your work and explanation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, are there any other questions? If not, we'll need a motion on this one.
I'll make the motion to approve. The change from a light to a roundabout at this intersection.
I think I heard Legaki, she was quick on this one. All right, any final thoughts or questions on this one? Very none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, let me pull up this next one. I know we have somebody that's waiting here patiently. Their future relies on it. So item number. Fourteen is a resolution approving the Director of Finance. Controller position. And this one came through the Finance Committee, obviously, you know, we did some interviews. I'll turn it over to all the person Schumacher for the introduction of the resolution.
All right, thanks, Mayor. R thirty one, twenty twenty two, authorizing and directing the proper city official. To approve the hiring of David Ellinger as the Finance Director Comptroller. Salary is set at a hundred nineteen thousand annually, and this is an exempt position. The background check, drug screen and physical have all been successfully completed. And the contingencies for hire have been removed, and I so move.
All right, I I didn't catch the second, I heard two of them. Okay, a second by all the person Bill, all the person Schumacher.
All right, we met on this earlier, we got a chance to meet and talk a little bit with Dave and. We got some input from those, some that were on the interview panels in there, you can see in the resolution. The between the two sets of interviews on there that it was a unanimous decision for. Hiring Dave and. Everything seemed to to go well with that. We didn't have a tremendous amount of discussion in there. I think a lot of that is is covered in his. CV that he. Included along with that and that he certainly has a lot of experience within municipal finance.
All right, anything you want to add, all the person Reeves?
Just that I I did have the opportunity to sit in on the interviews with two candidates. The questions were very thorough, I was, I I spoke both from personnel and finance. Perspectives as far as some of the questions I had. And I'm very confident our decision was the right one, so I enthusiastically support approval.
Alrighty, any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. None opposed, congratulations and welcome, Dave, anything you want to say?
Just thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to meeting everybody in person, working with the city.
We're looking forward to meeting everybody in person again, too.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, next item, another one that's been waiting patiently tonight, R thirty two of two thousand and twenty two. And this is. This is one that came through Public Safety Committee, all the person Jensen.
Me again. Yes, it's a resolution thirty two, twenty twenty two, approving formation of the Stodden Community Alcohol Committee. I would move for approval.
Second by all the persons, boom, all the person Jensen.
Yeah, this is something that's been in the works for quite some time. I know Teresa and her group have been working very, very hard to get this. In place. In conjunction with our committee and with the police department, so. I look forward to working with her in this capacity. And I would strongly approve, recommend approval.
All right, and since Teresa's been waiting so patiently, what would you like to say? And I know Cindy's here as well.
Well, patience is a virtue and we're we're very excited to. Start to implement some of the pieces that we've been discussing with the Public Safety Committee and strengthen policy across the city and. Prevent underage drinking, which is still even in COVID, a bit of an issue here, so. Cindy, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing specific, I'm just very happy that this is moving forward. I think it's an important piece of when we're talking about. Our committee, when we're talking about wellness, when we're talking about the city being healthy, I think this is a great step forward.
I also just want to add, I think this is going to relieve some of the burden to the Public Safety Committee and the amount of time that they spend on alcohol policy issues. On their monthly agendas and that a. A community oriented committee can help do some of that background work for them and make things a little more seamless.
All right, any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, item number sixteen, discuss and possible action regarding virtual slash hybrid meetings. President Hirsch, you want to start out with this one?
It's okay, I'm the one that has to have it on the agenda. Again, it was brought up by another council member that I just wanted to. See where everybody is at about having in-person meetings again. I know we just went through kind of. Keeps on having these waves of COVID, different variants. But it seems that Omicron is on the way down. And so I was just. Kind of wanting to discuss with you guys of where you feel about. Getting back together. In council chambers. So open it up for discussion. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, oh, by my my feelings on this, I don't think I've ever hidden it that that I'm I'm all in favor of meeting in person. But I know that not everybody is comfortable with that, so, you know, I would. I I'll just go with whatever the rest of the council wants, but. The sooner we can get back to being in person, I think it it just improves the way that we can work together. Eye to eye is a hell, hell, excuse me, a lot better than than. Looking at everybody in these little little screens, in my in my opinion, so I I'm all in favor of going back to. In person, but again, I I will. I will concede to whatever the committee says.
Jean, do you have your hand up or is that from before?
It is from before, I didn't realize my hand was up, but. I guess I'll say that I personally. I I'll just speak personally, I am boosted. I have been very remote and presence of people is so important to me, I have missed that. Aspect as an alder. So I personally would like to meet in person as soon, but I also feel. That these last two years have taught us so much about how we can adapt. And create more access when we need to. So rather than talking in like it has to be hybrid or has to be in person or must be virtual. I hope for me, I want to say without a ton of thought behind it is. I'm hoping for in person soon and allowing options for people for their level of comfort, given what we've been through these last two years. I don't want to be stuck in absolutes, I want to create access.
Very, very well thought out. You know, Lisa, then Joyce and Ben.
Trying to see if I'm muted. I I think I would echo what Jean has said, I'm prepared to go back in person. And follow what other, you know, whatever health guidelines are in place, masking and that sort of thing. But if, you know, continuing hybrid for those that feel like that's most appropriate. You know, I'm good with that, too, so I'd like the option to come back in person.
I would be very happy with a hybrid solution.
Well, we did put a council rules that hybrid is. Basically the option if we were to go into in person, so. I personally would exercise the virtual option, I still do have a daughter who will be vaccinated yet. And we're constantly dodging COVID from other avenues, so.
Completely understandable. Any other elders have want to weigh in?
I'm ready to come back in person, too, so that, you know, you guys miss out on my Christmas sweaters, so.
Brad, how did you know? You you channeled what I was thinking when I saw your name and your thing up, I was like, my God, he better come back.
I can do Christmas in July, you know, if you just want an early reminder.
There you go, I want you sweating in those sweaters. Of course, in July, in that building, you will be wanting that sweater. Because it'll be too cold. Ozzy or Phil, I just want to make sure we got everybody.
I'm good either way with it. I'd like to go back in person, but I certainly like the hybrid option as well.
Yeah, Ozzy, I haven't seen your face in two years, so I would, that would be amazing.
I've never met Joyce, so I mean, you know, other than here.
Phil?
And yeah, what Jean said. Put a pretty good, that was a very succinct, so. Whatever works for anybody else, I'm prepared, you know, and and just so that we're. Hopefully, we don't need to be fluid with this as far as the, you know, like you said, hopefully, we're on the. On the way out with COVID, but we don't know, but. I think being able to have options is a good way to go and whatever everybody, each individual person is comfortable with.
I agree, and if we have a hybrid and we're not all there, we can really spread out in in council chambers. I mean, obviously, masking up is. You know, mandatory until at least I think March first these days. So we can really spread out. And try to make people as comfortable as possible. I just want to. You know, in person to me, like, I think, can't remember who was saying this. I think it was Greg. We end up with a lot more discussion and. Energy around subjects and we can build off ideas. It's it's been tough last two years because I know everybody's struggling with. Their own way to deal with COVID and Zoom and. It it's, it takes a lot out of you just to look at twenty little people in screens. When you're not even playing Hollywood Squares, so you know.
I only get to see four of you at one time. And one of them is me, and that's that's not so good.
Yeah. So maybe, um, let's. If people are okay with it, um, let's do our next meeting. In person, it'll be strange. I'll actually, you know, have to get out of my pajama bottoms, you know, so.
I'll have to wear pants.
TMI, Greg, TMI.
It would be up to the various committees, correct, for those decisions?
Yeah, I would leave that to the chairperson. Keep in mind that, you know, since we went into COVID, our options for meeting rooms has changed. So if you're chair in a committee, we can talk as far as what rooms would be available. Most often, the council chambers is available, except for if there's a court going on, which I think is the first. And maybe one other Wednesday. I think they might still be virtual right now, but we could check on that. You know, public works, they tend to meet out there, building utilities meets that they're building. But any of the other committees, I think we would start with the council chambers. And then we would, we would work toward probably the fire station would be choice two. And then maybe EMS would be the third option, but if you're chair in a committee and you need to know. Availability, we can work together on that. Attorney Dragney.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so has the city. Attempted a hybrid meeting yet to try out the technology to see how it would work?
Yeah, one time.
We have, we know it can only be used for Zoom. For recording purposes on our local television. If it's a committee meeting, you know, you can still use the go to or whatever we set up on the agenda, but for the council. Or anything that's televised, we have to use Zoom, because that's what's compatible with our equipment. And it has been tested, it's been a while, so we would probably go out and retest it. But I know we have the equipment to do it.
Great.
So I don't know if we need to take a formal vote or not. It seems like there's a consensus to go hybrid and leave it up to individuals. And I would assume that would be the same thing for staff.
Go back and, and look at the policy to refresh my memory on what it says. I, I think, I think the policy says for council meetings, the question of whether it's in person or virtual. In person with a hybrid option or virtual is up to the council or in the absence of a decision by the council, by the mayor. So the council, if the council wants to make a decision and say, hey, our next meeting is going to be in person with a hybrid option. Then I think the council would need to, could formally say that. If the council doesn't say it, then it would still be the mayor's decision.
I'll leave it up to the council. Do you want to make a motion, Regina?
Sure, I'll make a motion that at least for the foreseeable future. Barring any other crazy variants that will go into the hybrid option for city council meetings.
I'll second.
All right, is there anything we need in the language, Matt?
I think that's adequate.
All right, hopefully Candy caught that.
I got it.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Great, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Some of you in person, some of you on your screen, whatever works for you.
Thank you all.
All right, good night, everybody.
All right, and then motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Stay safe and well, everybody.
Yep.